Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the November 14th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee. I would like to call this meeting to order and invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Introduction of members at our meeting tonight, we have...
Jenna Caslucio, President of Student Council.
Bethany Dunton, Blackstone Rep.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone Rep.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Vannaco, Millville.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Jack Keefe, Blackstone.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Danielle Catalano, Student Council Vice President.
Matt Errenworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
I know that somebody's gonna say this, but congratulations to the band, and then we'll go to you.
Thank you.
But, we'll get that one when we... Who's doing sports, you or you?
Uh, Jen is.
Okay, when we get to Jen.
We stole their report.
So, the past few weeks have been very productive for the school as a whole. Quarter one has recently ended, and we are beginning quarter two. Parent-teacher conferences are for the high school and middle school, where last night and tonight, giving all parents and guardians the chance to see how their children are doing so far. And all of our groups in the school have been doing very, very good in their activities. So, the marching band recently ended their season with a very, very strong finish. Having already won the title of state and regional champions, we went to MetLife Stadium in New Jersey for national champions and won second place. It was a very, very close run. We would like to give a huge thank you to Dr. DeFalco for attending and supporting the marching band. We have our banquet dinner this Friday at 6:30. And the band season is not yet over. We have, we are being a guest band at the Mashpee Christmas Parade, where we are going to play a holiday song, which is December 8th. Along with that, our jazz band, woodwind choir, brass choir, all starting up soon, along with a new program called Winter Winds.
Our sport...
Oh, wait, wait. Congratulations to the football team.
Yes.
And boy soccer.
Boy soccer, too?
Yeah, they went to playoffs.
I'm behind you.
Our sports have also had very good seasons. Our football team made it to championships, which were in Leominster, and they finished out with a really good season. Our boys soccer team also made it to playoffs, which was a good way to end their season, too. Some winter sports that are going to start, or have already started, are girls' and boys' basketball, indoor track and field, and cheerleading. Some upcoming events for the school is the annual Powderpuff Football Game, featuring female players from each grade, who play flag football. This is happening the half-day before Thanksgiving break. And some other upcoming events are that we have our winter concerts for the music programs, December 17th, 18th, and the 19th.
Anybody have any questions? Or you've got more?
No.
No. Questions for... Great stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish you a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
See you in December.
You, too.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, truly.
Thank you.
And I will also congratulate the BVT women's soccer team, because I believe they won the state championship, so congratulations, awesome.
Central Mass Championship, and they lost last night, six to zero, but in the next round, whatever that is called.
Everybody worked... I would like to take our agenda out of order, for the moment, and invite our visiting guests, auditors, accountants, to come forward, and then we'll go to your report. This is a 2017 audit report.
We have R.E. Brown, our auditing firm, with us. I believe it's Sean DiSarci was the auditor that worked with us, and Mr. Brown himself.
Well, Brown and Sean DiSarci. Sean's been the supervising auditor on VMR's audit for the last few years. When we do the audit, there's two products, the financial statements and a what we call a single audit report. A report required, because the district has $750,000 in federal grant spending. So, there's a separate report regarding the grants. In fiscal '17, the district had $1,090,000 in federally. So, it's under that requirement, and will remain under that requirement. The threshold was moved from 500 to 750,000 a couple of years ago, but that wasn't enough to exempt you, you know, the audit world. We wish they had bumped it to 2 million, but they didn't. You know, after 20 years, they only moved it up 250,000. And they could drop out of a lot of auditing if they just went to 2 million, but they didn't. So, it's also an extra cost to the district because of that. The full accrual financial statements, I don't know if any of you have it in front of you, but...
Don't have the full financial package in front of us.
Yeah. I just want to mention something on page 10. It's essentially a full accrual balance sheet. The full accrual...
This is the report.
We have the report.
We have the report.
Okay. Great. The full accrual balance sheet has all of your liabilities, pension liability, post-employment benefits that are currently unfunded. And the net fund balance after everything is, had a positive, $863,000. It'd be a lot higher, but the pension and post-employment benefits liabilities are 17 The bad news is, that's gonna change in fiscal '18. Post-employment benefits have been phased in as a liability over the last 10 years or so, and they just changed the standard, so that the entire liability is coming on in fiscal '18. So, that total net position of $800,000 in the positive is now gonna be a glaring negative. And that's gonna be the case for a lot of towns, school districts, cities. It's just a huge number, and for the most part, not funded. I don't think the district has started a trust fund yet to try and fund post-employment I realize finances are always tight, but it would be a good thing to start, because at some point, even though everybody, in the past, even though it wasn't always completely on the books, bond rating agencies knew about it, and theoretically, nobody's gonna be harmed by the number coming fully on the books, because they always knew about it. But at some point, governments are gonna separate themselves from other governments by funding that liability. So, that would be my one big-picture suggestion, to consider trying to move that into your annual budget for funding.
Just a point of information for the committee. The full financial reports were uploaded with the rest of the documents, however, they were about eight, it was like an 80-something-page document, so...
But we have them online.
You do have them online.
So, what is our total?
17 billion.
Currently, the combined liability for pension liability and post-employment benefits is 17 million. It's gonna go up by another 14 million.
By another 14 million?
About in '18. The post-employment benefits liability is a large number.
That number being spread across all of the years of post-employment.
Right.
Right, it's for...
Since the beginning of time.
Since the beginning of time.
For people already retired, and people who are in the system. You know, to the extent you have a lot of people retiring and using healthcare benefits before they're on Medicare, that's a large number. The other item I wanted to mention is, there is a budget statement in the financials on I'm sorry, not 14, 17. The district did wind up with a budget deficit on spending in fiscal '17, $50,252.
$50,000, I'm sorry, say that again.
Fifty, exceeded the, the actual spending exceeded the budget by 50,0252.
When are we going to see this, Matt?
It's online.
The actual, this is...
The document he's referring to, that we can't reference right now, when do we...
It's online. I can have it printed at any point for all of you. This was from FY 17.
Those are the major points I wanted to make about the financial statements. The other product is, it's a single audit report, but in the title, it's "The Independent Audit's Report as Required by Uniform Guidance and Government Auditing Standards and Related Information." We audit the grants, and we do compliance testing, and there were three findings in the report. The first finding had to do with cash drawdowns. The way the drawdowns were being made weren't being directly correlated to the actual expenses. So, there was mainly, sometimes there may have been overdrawers and underdraws, and essentially wasn't following the policy that should be used for drawdowns with the state. The second finding had to do with a particular grant. All the grant documentation said that it started during one period, what's the beginning?
March, I believe.
The beginning was March.
Yeah.
And we were told it actually started earlier, but we couldn't be provided any documentation. So, there was spending prior to the grant start date.
Approval.
So, we questioned the costs. We don't think anything will come with it with the state, but, you know, any spending before the eligible period has to be listed as a question cost.
I can add to the committee, I know that in conversation with the auditing firm, and I looked into each one of these concerns that are listed, there was documentation that actually clarified that the grant did begin in September, prior to the March period. However, the state transferred the grant system that we use to document the grants, and in this particular printout that was provided, there was a person's identifiable information in it as their login and name, and because their personal information was in the documentation to show that the grant was actually brought in in September, they weren't able to introduce it into the report, because identifiable information can't be used. So, that's something that we have since discussed, that we'll make sure that we have that documentation properly prepared to present to both accountants that we're working with and the auditors that come toward the end of the year.
The third finding had to do with time and effort certifications, and they were simply, they were done, but they were done at the wrong time. They need to be done at the end of the spending, rather than the beginning of the spending. That's easily fixable.
Yeah. I've since spoken, all of these, all of the findings were around special education grant funding, and I've since spoken with the Special Education Department, the new interim director, and the woman that works with the grant drawdowns, and we've clarified systems to make sure that these should not be happening moving forward. I cannot speak, we're gonna try to make sure that as we comb through the FY '18 proceedings, that if there's anywhere where we can make sure that we're affording the documentation to prove that we did it properly, we will. I can't make any guarantees that some finding may not roll into the FY '18, given that that fiscal year also was already closed by the time I came in and started having these conversations with the individuals. But I can say the major findings, one was drawing down off of a grant before all of the money had been expended federally.
So, when you say cash drawdown, it's actually drawing from the money awarded through the grant, not from a, like, cash fund somewhere?
Right, from, money from the state on the grant authorization.
So, we were charging, we were, in the past, we were pulling funds and just charging it to the general account, and then cat, and then transitioning it back and reimbursing it from the grant, but the purchases took place prior to the proper drawdowns from the grants. So, within alignment with budget sense and making sure that we're staying on top of, okay, here's what we've spent so far in this particular grant line, now we can draw down more, that's the system that we'll be following. And I've made sure that all of the individuals that need to have access to budget sense and will be checking it regularly before drawing down. The clarification of time and effort, teachers that are funded by the grant have to sign that they have received those funds, have received those funds, and that they verify the time that they put in. And because we knew in advance what the timing was going to be, I believe, we actually accidentally had teachers sign, they were verifying the time and effort prior to them actually having completed that work. So, now we know that we need to make sure that, we have to make sure that they've completed the work to confirm that the time and effort was exerted, not just what the plans were for the expenditure of the money, and then we'll document it and submit that documentation.
So, they signed saying they did the work on November 15th, certifying what they were gonna do on November 30th, and didn't even know if they would be here, basically, you know? Is that what you're saying?
It's a salary, some of the portions of salaries are charged to grants, so the assumption is, people know that they have sick days that they're allowed to take anyway, and they are not planning on not being at work for any extended period of time. So, yes, in short, what you explained is accurate, but it's not as simple as people saying they did the work before they did the work. It's, they, the intentions are there, and they know that they're not gonna miss that amount of work, so they sign, yep, this is where I'm receiving the funds from. I think more of it is a clarification to those people and an understanding of what they're signing. Some people may have been signing, thinking, yep, I'm confirming that I'm getting my funding from a grant, as opposed to saying, no, this is certifying that you actually spent this time and effort and are, you know, have earned this specific amount.
And that happened at least two years in a row that we know of, and what you're saying now is that it could possibly be a finding for '18 as well, so be prepared for next year. But it's happened twice, and we didn't fix it. Not you.
Correct.
We, as a district.
And that is something that we're trying to make sure that the appropriate documentation was in place, and...
Okay. Thank you.
Other than that, I'm open for any other questions you may have.
And I'd like to direct all questions, too.
I guess, for me, I think it's just important that you understand exactly what these gentlemen are looking for, for fiscal year '19, and that we finally fixed the findings, so we don't have...
And to that point, what, in front of you, we did hand out a letter that we had sent in in August, essentially outlining how we're gonna address the concerns that were brought forward to the auditor in this, from the auditor, pardon me, in this fiscal year, so that those situations don't occur again.
Thank you.
But we do have an action plan in front of you, that, and it also is embedded within the actual document itself, but we thought it would be helpful for the committee to have all that pulled out in one document.
So, what are the guidelines, particularly in relation to the grant funding? What are the guidelines from the state? It's required to be audited if you're over the 750,000, which we are. Is it required to be audited in a certain timeframe? Because I guess I'm concerned, we're hearing 2017 now, we've already heard 2018, we're into 2019.
There are specific timelines. We are behind the eight ball and working diligently to make sure that the FY '18 is done in a timely fashion, hopefully before the deadline. The timeline for the state audits, for the audits to be submitted to the state is March 31st.
March 31st is the federal guideline?
Federal guideline.
So, March 31st of the year that just ended.
Following year.
So, by March of this year, we should submit 2018.
Correct. And I've already submitted preliminary documentation to R.E. Brown for their initial requests for the FY '18 audit.
So, we can start that process.
We're starting that process.
We expect the March 31st deadline will be met.
And could you just go back to your first finding after OPEB? You're saying we ended our 2017, 16, 17 year in a negative of $50,000?
Yes, the budget was overspent by that amount.
So, does the audit show where that money then came from?
It impacted your fund balance, your general undesignated fund balance. You have to close the expenditures that were spent through the fund balance.
Wouldn't we have had to vote to move money from E and D to...
So, so, in the E and D authorization from the government, we send in our proposed E and D, and then in their work, they compare what our numbers show to what they're saying we may be in deficit, and then they actually will withhold funds from our E and D. So, they certify, they may certify a different number from the number that we're proposing.
And then it never crosses this table?
They close that gap. Anything that we, like, we potentially owed on grants or money that...
So, we, as a committee, so if we end the year with a negative fund balance, we, as a committee, would never necessarily know that?
And never vote to move the money to balance?
We should have.
You should.
We should have.
Correct. You, as a committee, should know any transfer of funds between major lines of the budget, and/or if there needs to be money added to the budget, if the budget is looking to go into a, you know, overspending situation. Money from E and D can be transferred to offset that, and that would go through the committee and then need approval by the towns.
Right, okay, thank you. I was waiting for that part.
If it's additional money.
That's the process.
Increase the bottom line.
So, we clearly didn't go back to the towns. I mean, I wasn't here when that ended.
This happened in the back end. So, this happened after the year was closed out, and, you know, the books were closed, so to speak. When everything was reconciled, it was found that we were overspent by $50,000.
Right.
And so, when we certified that amount, what Mr. Errenworth is saying is that that $50,000 is essentially withheld from the E and D, from going into E and D. It's taken from that.
Correct.
Yes, and so, yes.
But somewhere in the summer, we should have accounted for it?
No, last summer.
This was the last year.
But you've confused me even more, because they're gonna certify E and D, they're gonna take from it, but there would be nothing to take from if there's nothing to go into E and D if you overspent by 52,000.
There was more money than that in E and D to begin with. So, actually, if there is an E and D explanation, that's one of the things that I was gonna go over in my report. And I can show, I can discuss some of what it is that we're talking about. However, the E and D report that I'm, I intended to go over for this evening's, is this year's close, FY '18, not FY '17's. I don't have that printout with the specifics.
Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen? I don't know, I saw you, but I'm working hard. Anybody?
Nope.
All right, well, thank you very much for your time, we appreciate you coming out and speaking with us. You need to get better.
Not too far away.
We'll see you in the spring, again.
March.
I will see you probably sooner than that.
Yeah, and you were sharing that.
At the end of January. They have to be done by March? We didn't get, this is what we should have gotten in...
Last year.
This should have been submitted March 31st of last year.
And it just never happened.
Correct.
So, it's submitted, but they, in the past, they visited us at the end of January.
For the previous year.
It's usually when we get this, right. So, we should see them again, January, before February break.
Yep. Typically, typically, there's a, the fiscal year will close after July, like...
Right.
And then they'll ask for initial closeout information...
Bless you.
On the trial balances. So, then they'll ask for trial balance information and closeout information. They come, they, well, we send that to them, and then they set up a time for interim field work, and then they come with other questions that they're asking for other documents and other reports.
So, is that in process for '18?
This is a process for '18.
Are they already in that process?
I've already submitted the initial documents that they requested for the closeout. I'm in receipt of the documents that they've requested for their interim field work, so that by the time we're ready to have them come in, that's another piece of a conversation where I'd like to try to get some of our accounting systems cleaned up a little bit more, prior to going into their interim field work, so that we can move through the audit process smoothly.
Okay. So, we'll continue back with our regularly scheduled agenda items. And at this point, I would invite anyone who wishes to speak to the committee in a
Hi, my name's Jennifer Gelli, I live on Breffle Way in Millville, and I'm a kindergartner and fourth grader at Millville Elementary School. And at the town meeting that's scheduled in Millville for the end of this month, there's a warrant on the boiler at Millville Elementary School, and I was wondering if there was any information that could be provided in terms of the condition, or anything like that.
I'm currently working with MSBA and our staff to get as much information as I can, compiled for the, for the town of Millville. The intention is to present, is to present that to them, hopefully for tomorrow...
At the finance committee.
At their finance committee.
Okay, I'll see you all there, too.
Anyone else? Okay. You have in front of you a consent agenda A, which has warrants of the meeting minutes of October 10th, and approval of field trips to Mystic Aquarium, Roger Williams, Washington, DC. I will entertain a motion to approve the entire consent agenda A. Can you split it?
Please split it, I have to abstain from October 10th.
Okay, so, approval, I'll entertain a motion to approve the warrants.
So, move.
Booed by Jack, seconded by Sarah. Any questions? All those in favor of the approval of the warrants, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of the minutes for October 10th, I'll entertain that motion. Seconded by Tammy, seconded by Bethany. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
It's just Tara, it's not me.
Oh.
For the wrong beat.
And approval of field trips to Mystic, Roger Williams, and Washington, DC.
We have a presentation.
Can we talk to...
Yeah, Ms. Kirk is here to discuss the DC trip.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here if you have any questions. I was going to just tell you a couple, a couple of changes, so I've been working with Mrs. Finnegan, she's the point person on the field trip, she was the point person last year. We did, we did ask for a change, we looked in to try to get different tour companies to give us prices, so we are recommending to go with Capital Tours, who can give us at the same price. Last year, we went with Scholastica, they wanted $200 more for what we were asking. In order to keep that price that Scholastica had, we found out after the fact that we didn't have a tour guide, we would have tour... We would have tour guides with this. We are much closer to downtown DC in the, I think you should have with you, that, like, the itinerary. So, we would actually be leaving at 6:00 in the morning on Sunday, June 9th, and... Oh, is that attached to it? It's a tentative itinerary that they, that the company has put together. They would leave earlier at 6:00 in the morning, so this actually gives more time in DC that day. And then Monday, what would be new on day two is to the museum. That's a new museum, not to be pun intended, but I don't know about it. Mrs. Finnegan knows all about it. She's very excited with that. She actually worked with them to build this off of the new civics that we're doing, so that it coincides even better with what the students are learning in eighth grade this year to what they learned last year. And on here, it is tentative, because it does say if available, but last year, they did not go to the U.S. Capitol Building. That's in the agenda for this year. Monday night, it was usually a cruise, a dinner cruise that they did, but it didn't always guarantee that they were not another school there, and the price of this cruise did increase. So, this is a dinner and a DJ dance. That's just them in a room at Waterford. And that's been a hit there. Like I said, the tour guides were reinstated, and then the lunches are at a voucher about a couple of days before last year's trip. Scholastica actually paid us to have to do the lunches, and so, we had to go down there. Well, Mrs. Finnegan had to go down there with more money than she expected, so we will not be carrying more cash than necessary. So, we have found anytime Mrs. Finnegan has reached out to Capital Tours, she usually has an answer for any question, like, within the hour. So, they have been very helpful with that. They are a Massachusetts-based company out of Haverhill. I might pronounce that wrong, so...
No, that's right.
So, I don't know if you had any other questions. We want to make, try to keep it as affordable as we could for the families. I do help, and last year, I offered three different fundraisers. They could do one, they could do two, three, or none. And I did have students that some of them did fundraise, like, a whole payment, or half of the field trip. So, just an opportunity for those families to be able to, because the PTO does help some, but they only have so many funds to help us with some families.
Tammy, you have a question?
I have many questions. The first one is, what is the cost?
$595.
And so, that's $200 less than last year, but if I recall correctly, last year, they left the night before, so that they could hit the ground running in the morning. Was that not true?
Yeah. Is this one night less?
So, it's one night less than last year?
Mrs. Finnegan's welcome to come down. I don't think so. I thought it was the same amount of time.
Was it last year that they...
Well, the dates are on there. What are the dates?
Right, so they drive, they have...
On here, the date.
A day on the bus. They get there two. They're counting on it as one day. They only, they have two nights in the hotel.
So, they have three days of activity, which was what they had before.
And three nights when they can really...
Last year. There's been other times where they had more days.
So, there's three days listed on here.
Yes.
9th, 10th, 11th, but it says through the 12th.
They drive overnight and get back on the 12th?
No, they depart on the 11th at 1:00.
So, the 12th is...
The 12th, they're back in school.
But that's...
So, I don't know why that has the 12th.
So, it was only till the 11th?
Or they're back at midnight, are they back at 12?
No, they're going to be back, they'll be back late. Because they will be stopping for dinner on the way. So, it's like any of, any last year as well, on the way there and back.
It's a full day shorter than last year, because they left, they left at night, they hit the ground running in the morning, and then they got home at much later. So, they're missing half a day at the end, and...
Half a day.
And basically, half a day.
Their drive time is counting into their trip time.
Yeah.
They got home later than midnight in the past?
They got home late in the evening.
The day that they left, they left in the afternoon.
They usually leave, like, at 1:00. Like, the day, they have a school day, and then they leave right before school's out. So, it's three, it's usually three nights.
So, I guess I'm wondering, is this really a bargain, is my question? Because it sounds like we're getting less...
For the same amount of money.
Less for $200 less.
No, the same price.
Oh, it's the same price.
Less time.
Oh, less than what?
So, was Scholastica $200 more, but the same itinerary as the kids have had in the past?
Right, they were going to be $200, $250 more.
Without tour guides.
Without the tour guides.
Which we've never had.
They had us carrying cash to pay for the lunches. So, last year, they left on Sunday afternoon. They didn't really do anything in DC on Sunday, and was all, all day there Monday, Tuesday, and then headed home Wednesday.
Right. So, there was an extra night.
So, they had Sunday night, Monday night, Tuesday night in a hotel. This is just two nights. It just seems fast and furious.
If you'd like, I can have Mrs. Finnegan come down, because she filled out the paperwork for the 12th, and I don't want to, maybe the itinerary is missing something?
Yeah, what, can we look into that, and then we'll get back to the committee if there's any adjustments to that.
And these are coach buses, right?
I would just like time to kind of compare notes, because, you know, I'd like parents to be able to, I mean, I think...
Okay, but here's the thing. So, we are approving a field trip on the product that is offered to us. So, we need to understand the product, I get that. But we can't, but because one group went for three years previously, or four years previously, or two years previous, this is this group available to this eighth grade at this price.
Sure, but if it's the same price as last year for a whole day less, it doesn't sound like, it sounds like maybe...
It's not a bargain.
It's not a, I don't know, I mean, whatever. Whatever you want to do. If we want to vote, we can vote.
If you want to table it for a couple of minutes, I can get Ms. Finnegan down here. I'm just going to call her.
No, I don't want Ms. Finnegan.
I would like to ask her.
But she can give me that answer over the phone, too.
Yeah.
We, I mean, we can table it for another... Yeah, it's June, I think.
And there might be some additional services, like the tour guides, for instance. If we didn't have those in the past, perhaps, maybe that's what's adding additional expense that...
Right, and so, so what happened last year, when she was down there, is that the Nationals happened to win the NHL hockey for the... So, with quick thinking with Mrs. Finnegan, she said, let's go to the National Zoo, because the whole downtown DC area...
Sure.
But she had to come up with that plan, because there weren't no tour guides.
Yeah, so she may want the additional support in traveling the city with X number of eighth graders.
Right, so that you don't, you have bus drivers who are paying attention to the driving and...
So, they're probably paying for more services with that, but we can get the explanation for that, just so the committee has it, if that's something they'd feel comfortable with.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
So, I will entertain a motion to approve Mystic Aquarium and Roger Williams Park Zoo.
I just wanted to hold up on the Mystic, because I had thought, and I don't know if Mrs. Shafer, if you are able to answer this, or if we can maybe get the answer on this. I thought at one point, there was talk, because of the second and third grades being combined, that they might do a combined field trip?
Yes, so... Sorry. So, the, the students in Mrs. Nedgy's class is, they are studying the second grade science curriculum, so they're going to Mystic Aquarium, because we were told that the Telstone Bus Company is not going to Boston because of construction and such. So, they used to go to...
Switching to Mystic.
That's why they're switching to Mystic. And Mrs. Aubrey's 2, 3 class, because, because they're studying the third grade social studies curriculum. Mrs. Carpenter, Mrs. Dubois, and Mrs. LaFortune, they're all studying third and fourth grade curriculums. They're all going together. So, four classes are going together.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Shafer.
Do we need a motion to table?
Yes, we do.
Well, yeah, but we're separating them out. So, right now, I'm on Mystic and Roger Williams.
There was a motion, there was a motion and a second on the DC trip, so we need a motion to table that before we can move along.
I entertain a motion. Nobody made one, because they wanted to give a presentation. Did somebody make one?
Can we make one now before we move along?
We, we can, we are entertaining a motion for the Mystic Aquarium and the Roger Williams. So, we'll do those two, in that order. So, moved?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Move to approve the Mystic Aquarium and Roger Williams field trips. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? I will entertain a motion to either approve or table the Washington, DC trip.
I will make a motion to table Washington, DC.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of tabling Washington, DC?
Aye.
Until when?
Next meeting.
That's a long...
Do we get our answer?
Can we do anything in between?
Can I ask a point of clarity?
Yes, you can.
So, are we tabling it, because we are waiting for additional information? I guess from, from my perspective, if the teacher that's leading the trip wanted to cut out a day to use the additional resources to help navigate the trip, so kids know exactly, and she knows exactly where they're going and what they're doing, I, I don't understand why we table that. I'm happy to provide the information, but I think we should just approve, my recommendation, we do approve the trip, so they can move forward with their planning, and I can get the information to the committee respectfully.
And I just want a point of, I want parents to understand what they're getting.
Yeah, because it was just...
Because the same parent paid for the trip last year and is getting us what I feel is a significantly different trip. And so, I think the point of why it is so significant, when you're paying $600, you know, I think they, they would want, and I don't care if my kid's not my kid going on a trip, I'm not paying it.
But I guess my question to me, would you then not approve it? If you didn't feel that was...
Well, I guess I want to make sure that it was compared, she, Tanya came up and said that it was a better, it was a savings, and it was, and it's...
From Scholastica.
Do they realize it's not the same trip? That's my question. It's the same price, a lot, a whole, a whole less day, totally different trip. At Meet Teacher Night, the dinner cruise was promoted to the parents as part of a highlight of the trip, and it has been a highlight for kids. I'm sure Dinner Dance is going to be just, but it is, it is a pretty big change compared to what kids are looking forward to, students, and what the teachers have, have taken them with before. But to me, the, the red flag was Scholastica went up $200.
Well, this, Scholastica was $200 this, like, this was the proposal. I just talked to Mrs. Finnegan. She did write the 12th on there, so we will, she's going to email, and we will have an answer by tomorrow from the gentleman.
Right, but if I may, I guess what the clarity, I was looking...
What I'm saying is a savings, is it's what, we asked for two proposals, one from Scholastica, one from Capital Tours, and these are the items that we wanted this year. And Capital Tours can do the dinner cruise, it's $70 more for the dinner cruise. So, we can still do that, but this dinner at the hotel and stuff is at a less, must, less cost.
So, I'm going to ask the committee to think about something, because I understand that people are very passionate about it. But when we approve school field trips, we approve them from the point of, do they meet the curriculum development needs of the students? Do they align with what the students are studying in the curriculum? Do they make sense for students to, to visit these places? We never compare the cost of Mystic to the cost of the Boston Aquarium. We never, we never, I understand parents are paying that.
Parents should be getting the information.
Parents should be asking those questions and getting that information. We, as a committee, approve field trips if they meet the guidelines, and they meet the need of our students, they serve a purpose, they help the curriculum develop, they help the student. I mean, I, I see a huge benefit in sending eighth graders on an overnight trip without their parents, you know, on, whether it's a one night, a two night, a three night, I see a huge benefit. Some other parent may not. That parent has to make that decision, based on the price that's in front of them, based on what they can afford to do, whether they can fundraise, whether or not their child can even spend a night in a hotel without them. There are some still in eighth grade who won't take that trip, because they are not developmentally ready to take that trip. That's the choice of the parent and that student. That is not the choice of a school committee. And so, my belief, and we, we had this discussion last year around this very same trip, we seemed to be going kind of in that direction, where we seem to be the ones who want to dictate what this trip is, and I don't think that's our role.
Excuse me for one moment. Last year, the issue was, we did not know who was leading the trip. That was a big deal.
That was one of the issues.
But that was a big deal, and we need to be able to ensure the safety. And so, this, last year was a totally different conversation. We did not, at the time that Tanya sat at this table last year, she could not answer who the leader of this trip was going to be. That's why we tabled it.
We did, and that came back to us, but we had a lot more questions than that.
I just want point of clarity.
Money has always been, band trips, school trips, we have, when parents are funding it, Jane, we have always discussed the price of a field trip. And this is, I mean, and this is no different. She, you opened your presentation with, we went with a new tour company, and that is something we should all be paying attention to also, because we're entrusting our kids into the, I mean, asking questions, we shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a negative thing. We have every right to ask any questions before we, we're giving our stamp of approval to send 140 kids and to ask the parents to pay for the three-day trip. It was just presented to us as this was a better, same trip, a better price. That is not the case. All we did was point out that it's actually a half a day less.
But I think, didn't you just say, though, that they compared the same trip?
Yeah, when we, what we asked from Scholastica.
It's different than what you were envisioning, but she compared Scholastica to Capital for the same trip, and it came out less. So, not to what you're comparing it to, but what she's comparing it to.
I have no doubt that Ms. Finn didn't put together where, everywhere she wants to be. The question came up, because the prices didn't match the time of the trip from last year to, we shouldn't have never compared last year to this year. It's not the same trip.
But didn't you just say...
Well, I just said, I was trying to still keep the cost at a reasonable price for the field.
That's what your point was.
So, the way I'm seeing it, is that it's a different trip, and it's not in our purview to decide how the trip is planned, just to approve it, based on whether it fits the criteria. The trip is never going to, it's not going to be consistently the same every year, and it changed this year, and I think that the ability of the people who plan the trip to get that message to the people who are going to be paying for it is fine, and as long as everybody's understanding that the trip is how it is this year, and it's not the same trip as last year, there's no problem with it.
There was a motion to table, and it was seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling to the next meeting, which is December, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
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 Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the Washington, DC trip.
So, moved.
Moved by Jack?
Second.
Seconded by Bethany? All those in favor, any discussion on that? Pending the clarification of the days of the trip, but... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Next thing on our agenda is the approval of school committee protocols. There were some typos, but I think they've been corrected.
Yes, they are in your packets.
So, we have put together a school committee protocols for the purpose of enhancing teamwork among members of the school committee and between our school committee and administration. We, the members of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee, do hereby publicly commit ourselves collectively and individually to the following operating protocols. Do you want me to read them, or wait for the reading of them?
Can't leave it.
What?
Waive it.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve these.
Can I just ask a question first?
Sure.
Approving them at an open meeting like this does what?
Puts them into our manuals, puts them into our, if somebody is new as a school committee member, it would be what they would receive on the way that we say that we're, who we represent, how we plan to conduct our business and the things that we will focus on, how we will communicate, and how we will continue to improve as a committee and understand our limits.
Thank you.
So it makes it our official working document. For the way that we operate.
Will this be posted publicly for their parents?
It needs to be.
Yeah.
Probably under the school committee page of the website.
Can do that.
Jack, did you move to approve?
No, but I can't.
Thank you, Jack. Is there a second? Seconded by Sarah, is there any other discussion or any questions on any of these? We did go over some at our workshops and we did send it out. All those in favor of approving our operating protocols, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you. Subcommittee. We have chosen as a school committee this year to have one meeting per month on the second Wednesday of the month and on the fourth Wednesday of the month to use it as a workshop and/or subcommittee meetings. And so we have developed some subcommittees, one of which is the Finance Subcommittee, which will be chaired by Erin and have Karen, Sarah, and Tara on it. And that is also going to include the facilities and this document that I have didn't make that.
We've made the change.
But we've made that, so that it's facilities and finance combined. Public Relations and Community Outreach is Jack and Tara. The Teaching and Learning Subcommittee is chaired by Bethany with Tammy and Sarah. The Personnel, oh, we were going to change the title of that.
Yeah, that's been changed too. It's the Negotiation and Superintendent Evaluation.
So the Negotiation and Superintendent Evaluation for Negotiation, it'll be chaired by Jane Reggio. For Superintendent Evaluation, it'll be chaired by Bethany. But it includes Sarah, Jack, Tammy for negotiations and Matt Jason. And then we're adding in Bethany to the group when we talk about superintendent evaluations. And then a Policy Committee is chaired by Tammy and Jack and Erin are sitting on that committee. And we do participate in the Wellness Committee through the district and Jack is our member to the Wellness Committee. So does anybody have any changes that they would like to make or be on a different one? Because some people just were volunteered.
I think I was volunteered, but I think you all right.
Yeah, a lot. A lot, thank you Tara. Erin, you were too, you okay?
Yeah, I just, I know you're intertwining them probably to make less, less, right? But the Negotiation and Superintendent Evaluation, I just, I can't do negotiations, but.
You do want to do that.
I do want to do Superintendent Evaluation, but in lieu of policy. Only because you made, I mean, that Finance Facility one is huge now by putting the two of them together.
You're right.
It's like the work of three.
There's four of us.
Okay, so make those changes. We'll add Erin when we're having discussions about, so Bethany, you'll add Erin to your group.
Yes.
And Tammy, you'll take Erin off of your group.
Sorry.
Is Tammy a committee of one now for Policy?
No, Jack's still hanging on.
Jack's hanging on. Jack's, Jack's on a lot of them. Well, everybody's on a lot. It's all good. All right, any other changes anybody would like to make or want to put yourself on to one that you're not on? Okay.
Do we have to approve it? I don't believe so.
No.
Informational.
And School Committee Calendar. So because of that, that means that we will have School Committee meetings on December 12th, January 9th, February 13th, March 13th, April 10th, April 8th, May 8th, and June 12th. So the second Wednesday of every month. And workshops on the 28th of this month, the 23rd of, none in December. 23rd of January, is this our hearing, is this the 27th?
That's Policy.
Oh, it is. On the 27th of February, on the 27th of March, 24th of April, 22nd of May, and 26th of. Anybody have any questions about our, so for public, meeting with a public forum, of course, all our meetings are open meetings, but business meetings are always, will be the second, for this academic year, the second Wednesday of each month at 6:00 PM.
Will the chairs of the subcommittees put together, not an agenda, I mean, you don't have to post an agenda for these subcommittees, do you?
We will post, we'll post the meeting, we'll actually post the, yep.
Okay, and then will there?
And if there's a major topic that you want covered at that meeting, it will be on that posted.
Put on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, and we would contact you or we would contact the chair of the subcommittee?
You would contact me.
Okay.
And we do need one vote to authorize the Finance Subcommittee to sign the warrants.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay. Does everybody have this?
I believe so, yeah, I believe it's in the.
Okay, yeah, I saw it. So you can keep yours.
Okay.
Can you give us four signatures?
What?
Three.
We need, I thought we needed five.
No, it's three signatures.
Three on a warrant.
In accordance with the Blackstone Millville School Committee Policy, Section D, File DK, the committee hereby authorizes the review and approval of all accounts payable and payroll warrants to occur during the meetings of the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee, provided that no less than three members of the committee review and sign a warrant. Said warrant shall be certified as correct and approved for payment.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So according to the calendar, it doesn't look, the Finance Committee is in green, so in February, there's no green box. So does that mean you wouldn't be able to get anything signed in February?
We can do it the 13th.
Oh, you'll do it on the main meeting, okay, I didn't know if you had to, okay.
We still have that option too with this?
Okay, I just was like.
And simply because those are general kind of workshop Subcommittee meeting dates, if a Subcommittee has a need to meet, they can call a meeting as long as it's posted the $38 in advance.
I just, when I didn't see any green and saw that this was, I wanted to make sure we didn't have two months where you wouldn't get any checks because that would obviously be problematic.
For clarification, I believe the intention is to authorize them to be able to sign them at the workshops. The intention is probably to be signing them at both the working meeting and the workshops. Because we have bi-weekly payroll.
Okay.
It was when we moved to the one month working meeting that we needed to authorize a smaller committee to sign off on the second warrant.
Oh, okay. Okay, entertain that motion.
I just have one other question.
Okay, let's get the motion moved second.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Jack, seconded by Sarah, question?
I just want to clarify the three members. Because I believe previous, even when we didn't have a meeting and we wouldn't go away and sign.
So this reference, the reference on the sheet is our actual policy. I pulled that from our policy manual and it states that they can, a Subcommittee of no less than three members.
For financial documents though?
Correct. This is for warrant, this is for warrant payments. This was pulled from our policy, DK.
I'm sorry, I can't pull it out of anywhere.
There's a link, our policies are all housed.
Jack might, Jack might have it, he's on the policy Subcommittee.
Our policies are all housed online through mask, so I went and I found the actual wording of the policy and put it here for reference.
We can authorize a non-formal group to approve the documents.
Does this specify that it's the Finance Committee, am I missing it? Or can it be any?
The language of the vote, the language in the vote specifies.
Yeah, Finance and Facilities Subcommittee, yes.
Specifies.
And one of the recommendations, if I may, from the Massachusetts Regional School Association meeting was, if nothing else, to ensure that there is a Finance Subcommittee of the School Committee that manages exactly these types of fiscal components of the work. So that was underscored repeatedly.
Any other questions?
I think that Tara's point is the language just says a Subcommittee, not the Finance Subcommittee.
Oh, on here, but what we're, so you have to read up here.
Right.
So what's up here, will it now be our Policy Committee?
We'll move that over there.
We'll write a new policy? So that this language is incorporated into DK.
Okay, okay, I got you.
The language for the vote would be for the practice, provided that the practice doesn't go against the policy.
We're not changing the policy.
We're not changing the policy, the policy is that, it stands as that. I just put it there as a reference.
Oh.
To verify that we could do this without changing policy.
Without changing the policy.
Okay.
I know what you, I know what your question was, that's why.
I'm sorry if it wasn't, I'm sorry if it wasn't clear.
No, no, sorry, we're good.
All good.
All right, so we have a motion in accordance, well, in accordance with the Blackstone Millville School Committee Policy, Section D, File DK, this committee hereby authorizes the review and approval of all accounts payable and payroll warrants to occur during the meetings of the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee. Hold on, wait a minute, I'm going to pause because now I have a question. Accounts, review and approval of all accounts payable and payroll, it says during the meetings of, so should it be during the meetings of the Finance and Facilities Subcommittees and/or School Committee meetings?
We already have authorization to approve them during the working.
During the meetings of the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee, provided that no less than three members of the committee review and sign a warrant, said warrant shall be certified as correct and approved for payment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention.
So technically, if we had just started doing it, it wouldn't be in violation of the policy. Just wanted to clarify that that would be in practice.
That's our, that's our plan. All right, I'm following now. Reported the Superintendent.
Thanks, Ms. Reggio, good evening, everybody. So we have a few items on the report this evening. First, I'd like to ask our athletic director to come forward, Ms. Tossi, to talk a little bit about an opportunity for our students to join a co-op swim team. And Ms. Tossi will give us some of the details of that, so good evening, thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. So we had a opportunity to join the Grafton Swim Co-op for boys and girls. I was approached by a couple students and their parents last year for incoming freshmen that were interested in swim. The co-op with Grafton consists of Grafton, Sutton, Nittmuck, Northbridge. And I mean, as you can tell, there's a lot of schools in that one co-op. So the swim is not as of a popular sport here, so they pull kids from different schools to try to fill one team. They, the user fees for the swim co-op is $250, that would go to Grafton. And practices are being held at the Whitensville Community Center. It is no cost to our district, it just allows our students to have more of an opportunity to participate in a sport that they have a passion for. And a swim is not a traditional sport like other sports that we have at the high school. So it does give these kids that have that passion for swimming to be able to, the opportunity to play.
So a student who wants to join the swimming co-op pays a user fee of $250 and that goes right to Grafton?
Yes.
They pay no user fee at BMR?
No, they do not, because it's not costing us any money.
And we are not supporting it in any way necessarily, other than saying rah rah.
Go for it, yes. And again, there's no transportation, they provide their own transportation to Whitensville Christian Center for their practices and their meets. And it's similar to what we have with lacrosse with Hope Dale and as well as with ice hockey with Bellingham. And then on the other side, we have Douglas that co-ops with us and it's the same thing. Any questions?
Who, it's just popping off the page at me that Grafton, Sutton, Nittmuck, Douglas, Northbridge, and Auburn, not Auburn. Those are usually the schools we're competing against for our other sports. So who do they, who does this co-op already compete against?
I do have the schedule, I can forward you guys the schedule, I don't know off the top of my head of who they compete against. I know that they.
But every meet is held in Whitensville, they don't travel?
They do have away meets as well, but their home, their home pool is in Whitensville.
So they would be traveling to whatever those competing towns?
But Grafton would provide that transportation.
Transportation, correct, yeah. So they'll meet at the Whitensville Community Center for practices and for bus transportation to away meets.
And how many kids?
Glad to share the schedules with you guys.
You have a couple, you have like two that?
Two, I think I'm, we have two girls that I know of. And I'm, from when I talked to the Grafton AD, a lot of the schools only have maybe a handful of kids.
Well, clearly. Where they each only get to swim once.
With that huge number of schools.
Everybody gets one?
What is the swim season?
Winter.
Go ahead, Tammy.
So this is an opportunity for males and females?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's a two-year co-op, so after the second year, Grafton will reach out if they want to continue the co-op with us, if we want to continue with them too. But I think it's just, again, a great opportunity for students to get involved in something that they enjoy doing that we don't really have the facility to have it here.
I just want to say one thing.
Go ahead.
I mean, I, as a parent who is involved in the athletics here, you know, I think one of the concerns that might be for people out there, and it was an initial thought in my head, was that, you know, we are short players now. We had to play a JV soccer, girls soccer with nine players instead of 11 because we didn't have enough to field. Basketball is already, you know, seeming that the numbers aren't going to match up for three teams. So, you know, we're now opening this other opportunity. But as I reflected on it, as we saw this yesterday with a meeting with Dr. DeFalco, then I thought, why should the swim girl save my basketball girl, sort of, you know? And so I think, I think I support this myself because this may reach some kid that has no connection to his or her peers and this might be their opportunity to become a player in something, I don't know if they call them players, but.
You know.
A swimmer, yes, so.
An athlete.
To those out there, I, you know, I think I thought of that, you know, the shortage of athletes in BMR School District at some, especially for the girl's sports. But I think everybody deserves an opportunity to do what they enjoy and somebody enjoys swimming, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Right.
So I'll just piggyback that and say we now have five co-ops?
We have quite a bit, we have football.
So could we, could we please find them for the sports we need? That's my plea.
Yes, and I mean.
We have suffering teams.
We do, and it's.
I know it doesn't happen overnight.
It's unfortunate that some of those schools with those sports, they don't need a co-op or, you know, a lot of the schools that will co-op in basketball or soccer are either inner-city schools or private schools that just don't have the kids in their building. And, you know, I think I did say that I did reach out to do a basketball co-op for girls' basketball with Uxbridge and it got denied. In order for a co-op to happen, the other school needs to have the need for it. And I don't think we would want to be not a hosting school for soccer or for basketball because then that would mean that our kids are now not wearing BMR jerseys, they're now wearing the other school's jerseys. And it just, I feel like with, especially with basketball, I mean, that's a sport that brings community to the school and we would hate to lose that.
Anybody else, any other questions?
How does insurance work for co-ops? Do we cover those swimmers?
We put them on our, for our other co-ops that we have, we have them on our registration form. So Grafton asked us to put them on our family ID, so they would be kind of covered under our insurance. And then if anything was to happen transportation-wise, it would be on Grafton.
I'm just curious how that financially worked for insurance.
I'll entertain a motion to have a co-op swim team.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bethany, seconded by Tam, any, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Um, Steve.
Abstained, is one abstent.
Thanks, Ms. Tossi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, I just want to give a very brief update on our science curriculum development, uh, we're really excited that work kicked off today. We did go through and really develop the scope of work that we're looking for, and put out, um, an opportunity to, directly to our teachers at every level. And we have a team that is comprised of two principals, Mr. Jangali, Ms. Shaper, who are here, who are leading the efforts, um, and we have about 10 teachers. We have two from the high school, uh, we have three from the middle school, and three from the elementary school, that's eight. And so, um, we have four from the middle s- elementary school, sorry, so that's nine.
Nine.
Uh, so we have nine teachers, um, who are leading the charge, and, uh, you know, this is a really important, um, piece of the work for us, not only because, as you saw when we looked at our, uh, our results at our last meeting, science is definitely, uh, an area that is in need of quite a bit of improvement for us as a district. But, this will also lay the, um, the process and the procedures that we're gonna use to be revising, uh, and/or creating new curriculum, um, for social studies, for math, for literacy, uh, and then, of course, our unified arts eventually. So, uh, this is a really big deal for us, and I'm really proud to say that, um, that the process of the team is laid out, um, for the district is the right process, it is in the hands of our teachers, of our principals. Uh, and we are partnering, um, with a lead expert in the field from Teachers 21, that has taken many school districts through this exact process. And so, again, we talked a little bit about, uh, one of the drawbacks is where, you know, we're, we're late to this, this needed to be in the hands of our teachers and our students, um, you know, two years ago. But, one of the benefits of this, in doing it now, is there are many districts that have gone before us. And so, uh, we don't have to necessarily reinvent the wheel, so to speak, with this, um, and so we have a lot of really good examples, and there are a lot of folks at, um, at every level, from teacher level, principal, um, and, you know, the Department of Education, and consulting groups that have done some really good work in this particular area. So, um, we're excited, we're taking the challenge head-on, I know the committee has, uh, seen the timeline for this, and, uh, we are very hopeful that in front of the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, we will have a subsection of the Science Curriculum Development Team presenting their work, and talking about how the curriculum was developed, uh, why certain, uh, materials and resources were identified for pilots, how we put them in the hands of our kids and teachers, surveyed our kids and teachers directly to get their feedback on, uh, on what worked well, what didn't, and why, and what we should do next. So, a lot more to come on this, um, topic over the next few months, um, and excited to have the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee in place for this particular group to be able to go in front of, and then, of course, eventually in front of the school committee as a whole. So, uh, very good work to our teachers and our leaders for kicking this off today. The next item on my report is just a very quick overview, as you know, um, we are in an exploration phase of the Summit Learning Model, uh, here in, uh, BMR, and, um, we have had an opportunity to go on two learning tours, um, with educators, uh, both from the middle and high school, those are the schools that we are exploring this option for. Um, and, uh, today, we had our second learning tour, um, and had a chance to send, again, another group of, of educators out to go see this program in action. Uh, but with that, um, uh, Mr. Dudik and Ms. Kurt and I have been invited to attend, um, one of Summit Learning Academy's flagship schools in Dale City, California, it's their high school, um, that has embraced Summit. They, as I refer to it, they're fully cooked, uh, in terms of it's in place, and it has been in place for quite some time. Uh, we've had a chance to tour schools that are either in their infancy, or just starting, or they're somewhat under construction, so they're like in year two or year three, um, but the Dale City High School is very well, um, on their way, and has had this in, uh, place for quite some time now. Um, the Summit, the National Summit Team, uh, sees how serious, uh, BMR is taking this exploration, we are taking it slow, we are going very thorough, we are trying to get all stakeholders invested in the exploration process. And so, they have offered, uh, and outreach us to pay for myself, Mr. Dudik, and Ms. Kurt to go visit that high school in California, um, all expenses paid. We would leave on a Sunday, um, our flight would leave at, uh, I believe, 4:15 on a Sunday afternoon from Boston, uh, get in at 7:30, it's not a really fast plane, remember the times behind us, so. Trying to make a joke. We would start our work, uh, Monday morning at 7:30, um, uh, visiting their high school, meeting with teachers, administrators, parents, um, children, uh, we would end the tour between 2:00 and 2:30, head back to the airport, and the flight would leave at 4:15, um, from San Francisco, back to Boston, we would be in at 12:40 that evening, or the next day, but that evening. So, it is a very fast trip, um, and we will be probably on the plane for as long as we will be waking hours, uh, on campus, um, and sad for the principals, they will have to sit next to me for 12 hours, uh, but that's okay. Um, so, with that, we wanted to share that opportunity with the committee, because it is a really great, um, chance for us to see this model fully in place, and what does it look like when a school has it implemented with fidelity for quite some time, and the impact it has on teaching and learning.
I have actually seen a video on this school, um, a, a piece, kind of like a 60 Minutes kind of expose, and it was amazing, so, I can only imagine what you'll see in person.
So, can you just paint a picture for us on where this is heading, and all of, of the tours that are going on in the, you said we're exploration, exploration phase? What is, what comes next?
Sure.
And, and what is your vision for that?
Yeah, that, that's a great question, and so, um, you know, one of the things that's really interesting, um, is, you know, there are many schools that are interested in personalized learning, um, or blended learning to some capacity, but they don't have the hardware, they don't have the technology, right? So, Summit is a personalized learning platform, um, that is no cost, uh, there is a grant, uh, process that we would have to go through to apply for that, to cover the training of our staff, uh, and our, our building leaders and district leaders, uh, but there is no cost to the district. What usually is the appendage for places that want to take on personalized learning, or blended learning, is the hardware. And so, the committee, um, has been very, uh, forward-thinking, along with administration, and they have secured the hardware. And so, now, we have, um, one-to-ones at the high school, and we are going one-to-one at the middle school, uh, the devices are being imaged now, um, and a lot of work has been done around, um, the Google platform, and having Google classrooms, um, and an opportunity for kids to really, and teachers to really leverage a technology from that perspective. But we are only scratching the surface of what we could be doing with those devices to really accelerate, um, kids' learning opportunities. And so, one of the nice things about the Summit platform is it is a platform that is an open source, which means that anybody that plugs into it has access to all of the curriculum, uh, resources and materials, and by the way, can modify them accordingly, um, and will give students an opportunity to really leverage that idea of personalized or blended learning. And so, what we expect teachers to do, which I think is very unfair, to be frank, is we give them a device, and we say, now you're one-to-one, and now go do all that, that you used to do without the device, now with the devices, and kind of figure it out. I don't think that that is appropriate, uh, teachers don't have enough time to plan as it is, uh, never mind using technology as an instructional tool to do that. Uh, and so, what this does is it takes that guesswork out of it, and it provides teachers with an opportunity to work within a framework of, um, teaching and learning, you know, units of instruction, and lessons, and assessments, and resources that are already there, and gives them a chance to kind of augment, uh, what they want to do with those resources accordingly. Now, um, if, if the question is, are we going to go, you know, like wall-to-wall in the middle and high school with this, um, I don't think we can answer that yet. We still have a, a information session the week after, um, Thanksgiving break, I, I don't remember if it's Wednesday or Thursday, but I know a flyer did go out to families about that, and, uh, to staff about that, um, and so, we really want to assess the interest. But I will say, um, giving strong consideration to a pilot at the middle school in some capacity, and a pilot at the high school in some capacity might be a good next step, but there's still a lot of conversation that has to happen before we would do that. One of the things I have seen, uh, with something like this where, where it, it doesn't work, is when, um, it is essentially just placed into a school, or into the hands of teachers, or principals, and they're told, you need to do this, you have to do this. And, that is, that is not the approach we want to take, we're trying to truly kind of get under the surface of this and see if it's something that might be a good opportunity for our students. I will tell you, in conversations with our, uh, middle school and high school students, one of the things that we heard from our focus, my focus groups with them, is that they really want to move forward with a different way of learning. The traditional note-taking and, you know, answering the 10 questions in the back of the book kind of thing, uh, I think we would all agree is not the best way to instruct, nor is it the best way to learn. What Summit does is it gives teachers and kids the tools and resources to try something different. I should also mention, it is anchored in project-based learning, where children have the option to pick from a variety of topics and projects to help apply their learning to, and it also gives teachers an opportunity to differentiate the level of learning kids need right within each of the, the units.
I think the thing that struck me as well was the concept of this, whether it's project-based, whatever you want to say, it's, it's not only blended in the tools that they use, but it's blended in the subject. So I am not sitting in a math class, and then I am not sitting in a science class, and then I am not sitting in a Spanish class, but I am working on something that incorporates all of those lessons, and all of those things, and those teachers are working together. So now I don't have the math department, and the science department, and the English department, I have teachers that are working together on projects and, and focus, and that's the piece that, like, I was like, geez.
In high school?
Yeah, what?
High school?
Yeah.
A lot of interdisciplinary work.
Yeah, a lot of it.
It is very different, it's very innovative.
Yep.
And, and so, the good news is, uh, should we decide to move in that direction, we can move at the pace with which, you know, the kids are ready for, and that the teachers are ready for. And so, one of the pieces that is a non-negotiable, I think regardless, uh, for us, is we need the opportunity to augment those units of instruction, um, as our teachers feel necessary. And so, in particular, as we start to redevelop our science curriculum, um, and we start to realign the standards, if we see that, you know, this particular unit in seventh grade is out of sequence with our, you know, our life sciences, I want to make sure teachers have a chance to move those things around. So, that, that's, and there's a process for that, but I think that piece is really important.
Did you visit, is there a neighboring city that you visited? Okay.
Yes, um, so, I did go on a learning tour to Woonsocket, I went on one of, um, actually, it was, it was a kind of a pre-learning tour, uh, we visited, um, the middle school, um, one of the middle schools.
What did you take with you, did you have any teachers with you when you went?
On that tour, before we set up an official learning tour, uh, myself, uh, the, Ms. Kurt, and, uh, Mr. Dudik, and Mr. Bozeman, our technology, um, administrator, went to make sure it was really worth sending a group of teachers.
Okay.
To see, so we did kind of like a pre-tour, it was just there, um, and then from there, um, I haven't gone on the other tours, but the teachers have gone, um, we had a group go, uh, in October, we had another group go today, um, and.
What has their feedback been to you?
So I haven't had a chance to unpack today's, uh, conversation, but the conversation from the first learning tour, um, at the middle school level, there was a lot of excitement, there was a lot of interest, um, some questions. At the high school level, there was some excitement, a little bit of hesitation, and a lot of questions, is probably the best way to summarize it, I, I don't know from today, I'll have a chance to debrief tomorrow with some of the folks that went to, uh, get some feedback on that.
And I'm wondering how that would work, how Summit Schools works with our AP curriculum, our AP coursework?
Yeah, and so, that was one of the questions that came up, and so, some schools that have gone, um, full wall-to-wall summit, they have those, that curriculum was an, AP curriculum's a national curriculum, so that's actually built and is integrated in. Um, but one of the strengths to the program is, uh, we can pick and choose what we would want to have in place for that, so we wouldn't have to have AP courses if.
Same with special ed.
So, special ed is, it's, so it's integrated right into the work?
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, great. Um, and so, um, that is a pretty good segue into, uh, reviewing my goals for this school year. I think before, um, I launch into this, I just want to, um, very briefly kind of mention where we have been since, uh, last spring, um, to July 1st, kind of where we've come from July 1st to now, and where we're going next. So, um, I, as you know, have had a really, um, a really great opportunity to start the transition into this superintendency, um, very early. Um, and so, starting to do that transition work from March, April, May, and June of last year, having the opportunity to visit the district, to have a lot of discussions, um, with, with many of you, with our leadership team, um, with exiting administrators, with our, uh, union leaders, um, and really look at a lot of information, a lot of reports, and a lot of data. And so, coming into this July 1, uh, it did not feel like a brand-new start, so to speak, it felt like we, I was, really had the opportunity to enter in a very, uh, smooth, uh, and informed manner, and I think that's really important to mention now, because, um, as we think about the work from July till now, um, having just attended one of the new superintendent induction, uh, content days today, um, I'm very pleased to say that BMR is, is, is very far along in the development of our strategy. Uh, and that's because of the committee's, um, early, um, you know, advertisement and appointment, and really being, I would say, um, very assertive, and having a very deep and strong transition plan. That is not always the case in each place, so, it is a big testament to the committee for sure, um, because it has allowed us to get moving. And so, um, I feel, uh, very positive about presenting this evening, uh, what I would call, um, I think a more informal district improvement strategy, uh, but, in that transition from the spring to that July 1, and that work from July till now, um, have really been able to discern the kind of buckets of work that we need to do. And so, this isn't new, we've, we've talked about this, and we've heard this repeatedly, I think, um, even when I had met with parents last week, some of the parents laughed, they said, yeah, yeah, we know, the curriculum, the teaching, the kid, that we get it, so, it's a good thing, that means that.
They're furious.
It's, that's right, that means that it's, it's getting roots, which is good. But I, I do want to underscore the fact that, um, as we move forward through December and January, um, I will have a formal report to the committee on my entry plan findings, I'm in the process of writing that document now. And I say that only because it's that entry plan and that process that led to this, um, kind of preliminary strategy, if you will, which will then develop into a district improvement, um, strategy and blueprint for how we're going to do that work. So, uh, to no surprise of the committee, through that process, we have identified, uh, quite a bit of work that needs to be done around the what, our curriculum, the how, which is our instruction, uh, and, and in that bucket, making sure that the instructional space exists for teachers to be able to do this level of work with their principals, uh, and supports from central office, a look at the whole child, so those socio-emotional issues, or the non-academic issues that prevent kids from thriving in the classroom, and then, of course, the community, which bring the entire community together around the work. Um, and so, uh, the first goal, uh, for review is our student learning goal, um, and, uh, you are reading that first bullet correctly, um, it is my expectation that 100% of our students will show growth, 100% of kids will grow, uh, as measured by our state assessments. Um, and, um, we have to set a real assertive target in that area, um, we will use our scaled score for that particular goal, uh, to measure the growth, um, but it is important that our, our children and our parents understand that every single kid matters, and all means all. And so, we are working diligently, uh, in each one of our buildings with our teachers and our principals to set those goals, um, and, and progress monitoring in place to make sure that all of our students are showing progress. Uh, with that, drilling a little bit deeper into that 100% target, uh, we are looking to move at least, uh, and that is not governed, we're saying at least, that's not the max, but we want to move at least 10% of our students that are not meeting, or partially meeting expectations, into that meeting and exceeding. And so, while we expect that every student will show some, will show some level of growth, uh, we are expecting that at least 10% of our kids will move, uh, out of that category of not meeting or partially meeting expectations. With that, um, we have a significant achievement gap within our students with special needs. With that, we have a significant achievement gap within our students with special needs. And so you will notice that our third goal for our student learning category is more aggressive than all students. So you'll notice that we are looking to move at least 10% of students that are not meeting or partially meeting, but within our students with special needs, we are looking to double that. We have got to start really focusing deeply in on that subgroup of students and really helping those students meet and exceed expectations in both reading and math. And with that, we are also looking to have the other 80% of students grow within that achievement band. Now you might be wondering, you know, if we're saying all students up top and we're saying 10% of students in that second bullet, why the need to call out specifically this subgroup? For me and for our district, this is the subgroup that has to move. In some districts, it is your Latino population, it is your African-American population, it is your English language learner population. For us, it is our students with special needs. We have got to start focusing very deeply on this subgroup and meeting their academic and socio-emotional needs, and you will see and hear over the next few months a plan to truly overhaul the special education division of our, of our school district and what that will look and sound like for the adults and what that means for our children. But we have a lot of work to do in this area, and as a superintendent, I think it is critical to have a very bold and very strong goal to come right out in front of the work that needs to be done for our most struggling learners. And with that, we will also have a stretch goal where we are looking to also move because those students that are accelerated learners need to be pushed and challenged as well, and so we are looking to move at least 10% more of our students into that advanced level. And so we have a lot of work to do to make sure that that happens, but I will say to the committee what I said to the parents on Thursday evening at the Blackstone Library, we must demand excellence at all levels, all levels. Excellence from our children, from our teachers, from our principals, from our central office leaders, and all the way through. And so while these goals seem very bold and assertive, they are, but I believe strongly in the level of work that our teachers are doing and will do, and that our principals are doing and will do to move in the direction of meeting these. The second goal is my professional practice goal, and so I framed this piece of the work really around the work that I'm doing in the new superintendent induction program. That's a very important program, and I am very thankful to the committee for affording me this opportunity. And so for this particular goal, I will be creating and applying the skills and strategies specifically around instructional leadership, building leadership capacity within the district, and forging strong partnerships with the committee by completing the first year of the new superintendent induction program. They have a particular rubric against which I am rated, and they also have a survey that will be going out to our, to my leadership team, that I will share the results with the committee. That is, we just discussed it today, and it is meant to be a tool only for the superintendent, but I feel very strongly that feedback is feedback, and we all need that level of feedback, and I'm happy to share mine. And so I will share with you the, my coaches' rating on how I'm performing against the new superintendent rubrics, and I will also share the feedback from the leadership team with the committee as well. We have developed a district improvement goal around teaching and learning, and this really does anchor back to both the first and second bucket, if you will, or category of our district strategy around the what and the how, or the curriculum and the instruction. And so by the end of the year, 100% of our schools will show evidence of improving instruction and student learning through implementing our focused schools framework and the implementation, specifically the implementation of our school-based instructional leadership teams. And again, that is where teacher leadership really comes into play, and this is where we are working diligently with the teachers in each one of our buildings to really develop that instructional leadership from the classroom out and not from the top down. And so with this, we are working specifically around creating effective data cycles using our internal accountability system, that's the STAR system and other common assessments that we'll be using and authentic student work that we'll be reviewing. We'll be looking at that student work during our professional learning community meetings, and we'll be creating meaningful professional development driven by our student need and data, but also from our feedback from teachers. After the October PD Day, we surveyed all of our teachers to get their feedback on what worked, what didn't, what's next. We're embarking upon some work in writing at the elementary level. Before we move forward with it, we surveyed the elementary teachers to say, "Hey, are we on the right track here? If we shouldn't be doing this, what should we be doing? What should we be doing next with writing?" And so I share those components with you to say that we really need the teachers part of this process. Their leadership development is just as important to me as superintendent as the leadership development of our principals and our central office staff. They are in front of our children every day, and we need to afford them the opportunities to grow and build their skill set to be instructional leaders, just as we do our principals and central office leaders. And we will measure all of this through weekly standing meetings with principals. As you know, I am in every school every week, and I will continue to be. That is where the work happens. So meeting with principals, visiting classrooms, looking at student work, that is the work of an instructional superintendent. So we will continue with those meetings, monthly meetings with our focused schools work, Carrie Purcell, as you're all familiar with, regular learning walks at the schools, implementation of our professional development plans, and staff survey for feedback. The staff will be asked, "How are we doing? What do we need to do next?" They have been and they'll continue to be. And then as you know, the second area in this particular goal is around developing that comprehensive and collaborative process of writing, reviewing, and implementing curriculum. Our next district improvement goal is around fiscal management. We have three particular goals here. The first is around FY '19, and that is that the budget will be implemented and managed with a new system that will allow for deeper checks and balances to provide all stakeholders with the information necessary to establish stronger fiscal stability. I cannot underscore this enough. The money that we have to operate our school system, we need to operate with full transparency, and I know the committee feels very strongly about that as well, and you are hearing directly from me that we are committed to operating from that place. And I think the committee has seen, and the public has seen over time, that we have added cost center reports each month, we have added salary spend-down reports each month, we have added at the request of the committee, which I thought was a great idea, the revenue sheet, so we can track the revenue coming in every month. And Mr. Aron Worth is also going to be attaching the fiscal sheets behind all of those so you can actually look line by line to see every month exactly how money is being expended. This is something we are very serious about, and we will continue to operate from a very transparent and very vocal place about what's working and what's not with this. The second two goals are around the development of FY '20, the FY '20 budget, which is hard to believe perhaps, but is already underway. And so the FY '20 budget will be developed and proposed based on the needs of the schools in the district in accordance with agreed-upon timelines. This work launched with the leadership team yesterday, and Mr. Aron Worth was very vocal and very clear with the leadership team about, "We want the principals and the cost center managers to be putting their brilliance around the instructional planning and program planning for teachers and kids. We will deal with the minutia of paperclips and pencils and shipping and handling and all of those things. We do not want our instructional leaders, nor our teachers, spending their time on that work. We want to hear directly from the teachers and from the principals about the actual resources they need for teaching and learning, from books to science labs to technology and through all of those components." And the last piece, of course, with the input from the school committee, that administration will present the FY '20 budget publicly to demonstrate the alignment between the needs of the school district and allocation of the town, state, and federal resources. And again, I think it's really hard to get behind a budget when there's no academic or teaching and learning plan attached to it. And so if you think back to that first slide where we talked about our strategy, it is so important that our towns and our communities understand this strategy because every dollar, every penny needs to be anchored to an action within that strategy that is driven for support for teachers and outcomes for kids. And so we are very committed to having that in place. And the last district improvement goal is around community outreach. Again, I think these goals probably sound very familiar when we think back to the strategy, but by the end of the year, the district will establish a system and a series of community events to engage families and the community in the work of the district. Parents and the community will be aware of the goals and the direction of the school district through receiving regular monthly communications. I'm sorry that that's my little face in the corner of your screen, parents, when you watch that little link that we send, but that's just one means of reaching out. This will be measured through an end-of-the-year survey that we will be sending out to families, and we are hopeful that at least 70% of families and community members who respond to a school and/or district survey will demonstrate a favorable response, favorable response, excuse me, concerning the overall direction of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. And so one of the things that I had said to the committee during my public interview process last February or January, when asked about this level of work, was we will develop a strategy, and I am putting myself right out there saying I need to be held accountable to this strategy, to these goals, and for this work, and I'm fully committed to doing so. And so if the goals that I've laid out this evening seem very bold and direct, I hope they do, and comprehensive, my desire is, is because they are. And having had the opportunity to spend the time that I have had so far in BMR and really speak to as many of stakeholders as I have and the depth that I have, I do feel confidently that this is the plan that we need moving forward for this school year. If I'll pause that and answer any questions.
Any questions? Would you like us to approve those?
Yes, please. If you'd like to approve.
I would approve, I would love to approve, but I will entertain a motion to approve these goals.
So moved.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Bethany. Is there any discussion?
Yes. May I just say, looking at the student learning goal, I think you made a point of kind of talking about the 10% being, you know, all kids, and then that, that second line being the students, or the third line, sorry, students with special needs. I'm a coordinator of special education, I love that goal. I think the higher we raise the bar for students with disabilities, the higher they can get. And, you know, I have long asked why inclusion isn't a bigger part of what we do in co-teaching and those kind of things, and I, I'm super excited to think that when you say an overhaul of special education, it's got to include some more straightforward thinking and looking at how we can build that learning for those students within classrooms with typical peers versus the, you know, the pullout model that's been around. As a parent of someone who, two students who have this advanced level, we need to continue to think about those kids. And I think that although the middle kid, the middle group may sometimes feel like they're being fallen through the cracks, I think that high level is also sometimes overlooked. So I can appreciate that your learning goal has this span and, and the all really truly means all, and I'm looking forward to you meeting that goal. Or we meeting that goal.
Exceeding.
It's your goal, I miss pack it, so we're, I'm looking forward to supporting you as you do that.
There you go. Anyone else? Motion on the table to accept these, to approve these goals, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Absentient? Okay. That's the block to ya.
Thanks.
I'll help ya, baby. Okay, Mr. Matthews? Business office report.
Well, we heard earlier from our auditors, so moving forward, one of the documents that you do have in your handouts is the E&amp;D summary report, and actually, if you take a look at the top, there's some highlighted, this is the report that looks like this?
Yep.
And it's got some little highlighted yellow numbers on it. I tried to...
Do it in a type style, none of us could read without...
Yep, absolutely. I tried to, I tried to really stretch people's...
Ratnus?
Ratnus. We, you know, there's a, there's a room for growth, that area of stretching, and that's for visual acuity as well. But if you can look at that tiny number up top that's first highlighted, they, as mentioned, there was a reported in FY, at the end of FY '17, it was reported that there were fund balances in E&amp;D of $565,000. So when it was mentioned that there was a shortfall in our budget, it also wasn't referenced that there were potential excesses in our revenues, so I wanted to point that out. So he says that what was being discussed was the shortfall in our budget, but that doesn't necessarily mean that there weren't grant expenses that came in higher than we may or may not have anticipated. So if you look down that column to the left, there were, where I mentioned, one of the adjustments they made, which ended up being readjusted, was the DOR withheld $30,000 from our accounts at first, and then it was subsequently released, and it was, our E&amp;D was approved at, it was approved at approximately the 565. However, one of the first things we did for this last fiscal year, FY '18, there was the decision to move, where that, I wasn't part of the decision, but there was, there was use of E&amp;D funds to offset the town assessments of $140,000. And that money was actually used from E&amp;D. And so we began the fiscal year '18, essentially, if you move to the right, that fiscal year actually began E&amp;D with $409,541 in our E&amp;D account after we gave the $140,000 offset to the town assessments. If you go down to the next highlighted yellow line, to the left of it is a little bit more of the detail, but essentially, you can see, as I said, may have been the case in FY '17 as well. These are our revenue lines that came in, and the total of the revenue lines that we anticipated came in at a significantly higher rate. Most significantly, we got a lot more money in, we, there was an excess in the chapter 71 for transportation. And there were some major negatives, too. We lost more than we had anticipated in charter school and school choice offset, which we typically look at as a negative net, but the grand total of all of the aboves and belows with respect to revenue was we were in excess revenue, $144,176 more than we had anticipated.
Just a clarifying question, Mr. Aron Worth, and that's because the bulk of that, the almost 130, was transportation that we did not expect.
Correct.
And we could not have, we could not have forecasted that, that wasn't in the governor's budget.
The governor's budget was adjusted, and, and that came out later in the, later in the year.
Great.
The second highlighted line, if you take a look to the left, there's the supporting documentation for the expenditures for 2018. I will tell you that I tried to summarize this in a, in a more line-specific way for the, for the committee. The overages and underage, the overs and unders with respect to line by line in our budget would have been a mind-boggling mathematical problem for everybody. Not that you couldn't put it into Excel like I did, but there was nothing really outstanding that said, "This is where we were tremendously over," or "This is where we were tremendously under." But I suppose due to conservative, some conservative budgeting and some luck, there was an excess in, we... was an excess in, we saved in our expenditures. So, there was $119,000, approximately $120,000, that we did not spend in our expenses that we had planned on spending.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Enworth? So, of that, if I'm looking at this document correctly, we moved last fall 140 out of E&amp;D essentially into the bottom line, right?
Correct.
And so, of that 140, we did not spend 120,000 of that?
Right.
More or less?
Essentially.
Okay. So, we were, so we were fiscally conservative on that end in saving the 120, plus we had the revenue from the governor's, increased governor's line that we never would have been able to forecast.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understand the numbers. Thank you.
Absolutely. And the total, the total difference between what we received in excess of what we had anticipated and the money essentially that we, we took off of the town assessments, but then ended up, and we, we ended up not spending the 120. Totaled approximately $264,000, which we had to roll into the E&amp;D funds for the beginning of this year. So, this is the number that was sent to DOR to be certified at the end of the FY18 fiscal year, and I've not received confirmation yet that it is certified. They've had some questions about the, some of the bookkeeping. I've been going back and forth with the Department of Revenue answering questions and making sure that they understand all of our accounting, but it does seem like that number is accurate, if not close to.
And typically, we all get an email when it is certified. That usually comes to the full committee.
We get BBTs, too.
Yeah, by mistake.
Yeah.
Every year we do.
Every year.
And I'm like, it's not us.
And with that, we will be sending back to Millville.
Correct.
They were over-assessed in their capital assessment.
Yep.
Do you want to go over that, Mr. Enworth?
So, during the capital assessment for Millville, there was, the capital assessments include, include debt services, and they include the interest rates on the debt service and the anticipated cost of the debt service to the district. And I believe there was either an individual number that was used or a small miscalculation that was used in calculating the debt service total that Millville would owe. And we do owe them back $22,193 to the town of Millville.
And that would be from our roof project?
I believe it was from the roof, it was, from the financing of the roof project. However, that number, I don't want it misunderstood. The bottom number in E&amp;D includes us returning that, that amount to Millville. So, the accountants that went through this said, "No, we're going to definitely owe this money back, and we still will have this amount to certify in E&amp;D."
So, I think when we're, we are looking at how we essentially track our accounting, which I think is definitely much better as we're, as we're going along, or definitely clearer to us around this table, I do think it is important that we work, because if you all remember correctly, we put our original request for town assessments, and then we had to go back to Millville and say, "Whoops, we didn't charge you enough," and now we're going back and saying, "Oops, we charged you to," not oops, but we didn't calculate correctly. And so, we had added on to them, and now we're sending back to them. And I, and I think that that's difficult for communities.
Well, let's back that up a little more. It's not us, we.
No, 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 no.
That would be, the roof projects were handled by outside companies, and when assessments are given to the towns, it's given to them when we approve our budget, and it's going to town meeting.
Correct.
So that, we're essentially passing that number on...
Right.
At town meeting time, and it's assessed during a town meeting on their capital costs, on their percentage for each town. It could happen for either one of them.
It could have.
And it's happened many times. We've returned money for sewer projects, for, for capital projects in general. There's typically an overage that ends up circling back.
Which we did do.
And small percentage rates can change.
Which we did do when we closed out some projects.
And so, that, so the...
This is different than that.
Okay. That's what I was going to, because I remember having a similar conversation.
Yeah, this was, this was based on...
So, this is in addition to the money that we've already returned?
Yes.
When we closed out those projects?
Yes.
That was, that was different?
That was in July, I think.
The 673 is after we give Millville that money.
Returned, yes. It anticipates that we are giving that back to Millville, and then we still have the 673.
So, how soon can we give Millville that? Do we have to wait to be certified? Or can that go back? That's separate. That can go back immediately?
That can, that can go back. I certainly wanted to present that to the school committee prior to returning it. I also would like to clarify how, how that will take place, probably in a reduction of their next, of their next capital assessment. So, I don't know if it's writing a check back to them, or if, because we, we have quarterly assessments.
Correct.
We can, we can reduce their assessment by that money that we, that we owe them.
Or they owe us.
That, yes. No, we reduce the assessment by the money that we owe them.
Correct.
That would bring us, with respect to the accounting, to the next piece of my, my report, if I can move on.
Any questions?
Are there any questions?
Yes, you can move on.
Thank you. This, this portion of my presentation is not for a vote, it's for information. This is, I have, we've included information from the MARS presentation, MARS being the Mass Association of Regional Schools, and on the expectation of treasurer for the district. I also, myself and Sarah and Dr. DeFalco attended this training for regional school districts on proper finances and accounting for the districts, and what is in the best interest of the district and the school committee itself as a, as a governance body. And one of the things, I'm not going to take you through this entire presentation, but with no disrespect to anyone that has or currently serves as the treasurer of, for the district, they really emphasize the, the importance of having someone that is financially trained and is capable of regularly doing bank reconciliations on behalf of the district. I actually think certainly the school committee itself needs to be directly involved in the process of managing the finances and overseeing the finances, but it's a safety, it's a safety measure for the committee and the district itself to have another individual that is not part of the administrative team that is overseeing the work of the administration and overseeing the bookkeeping within the district. I do know that in the past, the, the district has engaged a treasurer or an assistant treasurer that received some type of a, of a stipend. That was put, that was put aside. I'm not sure what, what the rationale was for that, but I can say, it makes sense for the treasurer to be someone on the school committee that can oversee the processing of the payments, because there has to be a signature from the district on the checks that go out. That being said, the position of assistant treasurer, which is currently held by me, I don't mean to shed any negative light, in my research, I'm not supposed to be the treasurer or the assistant treasurer. I believe mass general law states that I shall not be the treasurer or assistant treasurer, and that we should have somebody with a financial background, potential...
You have financial background.
True.
You mean an outside person?
I mean, in addition to me, we should have someone representing the school committee with a financial background, or an accountant that serves for the purpose of representing the school committee versus simply, simply the administration.
An employee.
And an employee. Correct. That, lost my train of thought. Yes, I have financial background. That can be someone that is employed, that can be someone that is engaged. Another piece, when I was looking at our overall dynamics of how we, how we manage our finances, and this goes back to Dr. DeFalco's goal of revamping how we're doing things, we currently employ a CPA on behalf of the district that represents the, the school committee. However, I don't believe that that CPA comes in until the end of the year and then charges an exorbitant amount, I shouldn't say exorbitant, but a large sum of money to clean everything up at the end of the year, essentially coming in at the tail end of all of the work that's been done through the course of the year, and then charging us to fix it, which is not really best practice. I feel that the addition of an assistant treasurer would enable the district to have someone that's working consistently with the school committee to ensure that the bank accounts are reconciled regularly and that are being reconciled properly, and that the reports for chargebacks and for revenues and expenditures are being brought on a regularly, on a regular basis with another set of eyes that, that confirm what it is that the district administration is reporting to the school committee. And that was emphasized over and over and over again by, by the Association for Regional I did include, I, I have a, an individual that I had worked with in the past who has served as treasurer or chief financial officer on behalf of public, public school systems and other regional districts. And what I did was, I asked him to put together a proposal of services that would potentially outline what the, what the services would be that he could potentially offer to the, to the school committee on their behalf in, in service as an assistant treasurer position. If you will notice, there's no costs on this. That is, that is not to say that it is a cost-free process. I have discussed with this individual that I have worked with in the past, and so that you know, accounting services and auditing services for the school, for the school district, they're, they're not subject to going out to bid. It certainly is, is good to bring individuals in to hear what they offer, but those are certain services that it's almost like searching for an employee, that you are screening them and you're, you're looking for a, a level of expertise and someone that is the right fit for the district. My intention is, and I, again, in transparency, our current accounts, our current bank accounts, the reconciliations of the bank accounts that are currently done internally, which is not really where they're supposed to be done, the money that we have in, not that we're, not that we're missing money, but through the course of outstanding checks not being reconciled with the bank, through the course of payroll processes having been made online, and then those checks not being voided in our accounting software or on the end of the bank, the numbers don't match up. And the process that we follow currently is antiquated. Our, our reconciliation process is one that uses a homemade Excel sheet that was generated by the, the previous administration, which is functional, but it essentially takes bottom lines and compares the bottom line of our accounts to the bottom line of the bank account, and then if there's any adjustments that need to be made, they get plugged into the middle, and it should all tie out at the end. And a, a more efficient process is, and our software has the ability to, to run these reconciliation processes. They just haven't been implemented, I believe, since possibly 2006. But bank statements can be electronically imported into Budget Sense, and then a reconciliation is made on an active basis between every individual transaction that gets uploaded for Budget Sense and what it is, I'm sorry, uploaded into the bank, from the bank statements, and then where, what we have as information in Budget Sense, and then it gets cross-referenced and making, we're making sure that we've accounted for everything that the bank has happening. The long and the short of that is, there should be someone making sure that what we're saying is happening in the books is actually happening on the bank end. And that reconciliation process, as MARS will tell you, is the most important process that a school district should be engaging in. I would like, I've spoken to Dr. DeFalco about this. I would like to engage this individual to help me in my work in cleaning up the processes that we currently use. I'd like to do that first, to see what actual efforts it will then take for someone to serve as a continuous assistant treasurer to keep the process going, because the amount of work that's needed on a monthly basis, it's hard to tell when you're starting with stuff that's not in order. So, I'd like to get everything in order, get to a zero starting point, say that all of our books are right on. I'd love to do that before we have that interim fieldwork for the audit that needs to be submitted by March, which also puts us under a bit of a time constraint. And then I'd like to, again, come back to the committee, present a more detailed report of what the costs might be associated, and should the committee say, "Well, let's bring in six other people," that's fine. I, I may try to do that. I think that's probably excessive, but I think, yeah.
So, paint a picture for me of what an ideal financial team with the school committee and the district looks, because, because we heard from auditors. We know we have a CPA who you're saying only does our year-end cleanup or report or whatever.
Correct.
We have a, an assistant superintendent who is our business manager as part of it, and we're looking at an, an ongoing accountant to serve as assistant treasurer. Do we lose any of the other pieces? Do we keep all the pieces? What does the, what does the ideal picture look like? In year, month, after you've cleaned up and you, at your, you're at your new start? What does it look like?
So, there's certainly, there is a reorganization plan that Dr. DeFalco and myself are working on. It involves, it involves key components and the shifting of certain responsibilities. What that looks like exactly, I'm not sure if...
I'm not talking internally in terms of your office management.
Can I summarize this?
I'm talking, I think, externally in terms of auditor, CPA, assistant treasurer.
If, and if I could summarize that. So, the auditor, we have a contract with for another two cycles, I think?
Yes.
So, so that auditing firm at minimum will work with us for the next two cycles, although the, the folks at MARS strongly recommended that you switch your auditors out, too, from time to time, because they get very comfortable, right, with the district and such. And so, we have the auditor that does that kind of year-end work. Right now, we have, as Mr. Enworth mentioned, the CPA that does the cleanup. We would eliminate that. There is, there would be no need for end-of-year cleanup. Instead, that CPA would work with us in an ongoing capacity.
But that CPA working with you or following up on you is really working with us.
Works for, quite frankly, works for the committee.
Works for the committee.
To make sure that we have, the administration has all their ducks in a row.
Right.
And, you know, look, I, I think the easy way to summarize this, any fiscal institution has an auditor and has somebody that's on the outside monitoring the administration of those funds. We have a $22.5 million budget. That needs to be, there needs to be the check and balances in place for that, and the committee's, one of your main goals, of course, is the... And the committee's, one of your main goals, of course, is the fiduciary responsibilities of the district. So this is really, uh, school committees have moved forward with this model because it's a check and balance on administration to ensure the school committee has the oversight of the fiscal piece of work that's necessary. So the overall structure in terms of the CPA, instead of doing the backend, we would have that individual working for the.
Ongoing.
That's right, ongoing, working for the school committee. Does that, does that answer your question?
It does, because, because I will tell you my concern. My concern is, and I've been on, this is my fifth year on the committee. I have seen the auditor's report. We have seen the CPA come in on occasion, not often. But, you know, to, to bring in another person or bring in an assistant treasurer who helps reconcile, who helps, if it doesn't come back to us, we still are in this place of, well, okay, paper looks good to me. I, I guess it's pretty good. So I, I'm thinking if we're, in my head, I'm thinking if we're moving in this direction, we truly have to move into somebody who reports this, in addition to your reports, to us. So here is, so on an ongoing basis, here is what I'm finding on how we're spending down the grant money, or here is what, you know, is coming back. Because if, if that person works kind of hand-in-hand with you and is your check and balance and is reporting to you, we're still seeing one, one piece of that.
Yeah, that's a really great point of clarity. They do not report to administration.
Correct.
What, what, when you went to the conference, what were other districts doing?
Third party? As treasurers or as assistant treasurers?
Uh, they just said treasurers.
But right now, the responsibilities that are listed in here, it's being done.
By Matt.
But it's, you're, you're saying that the sheet you're using isn't up to par. It's not technically balancing in the middle. It balances at the bottom.
Yep. This is, the, what's being done in this process is spread through the business office, including myself.
But you oversee that.
I oversee all of, I oversee all of the work, but it is, it is happening in, in the business office by district employees, which.
Bits and pieces.
Ethically, that's not supposed to be.
Bits and pieces.
And we don't have any check on that.
Right.
We currently have, well, yeah.
I have more information now than I've ever had.
Right. Or two years later.
We can definitely trust, but we can't verify.
Correct.
We need verification.
And if, in the proposal of the services, you would note exactly what your question was, Jane. There would be monthly reconciliations that were done by the individual working for the school committee. Whether that was reported out by this specific individual or not, or reported out by me, that remains to be seen, because then you start looking at, again, travel expenses and bringing people in. There are also quarterly reports that are on all of the chargebacks and all of the grant expenditures that would be presented, and that I would highly suggest bringing an individual other than myself in to do, but.
So, under this model, it, it sounds like you're saying, right now, that the data entry of these kinds of things are going into a homemade Excel spreadsheet, I think were the words you said. And that's being done by our personnel within the business office. And so, under the new model, if you have a CPA, does the day-to-day entry still happen by the business office employee, whoever that may be? Or does that CPA come in once a month, have a pile of stuff, and then he or she? I, I don't, I don't know where the.
Those are perfect questions.
I guess my question is, at the end of, end of that is, where does the business people do? What do they do?
No, so absolutely. So, and, and that was a great question. So, when I mentioned some shifts in responsibility, I meant that because I have a bookkeeper and myself overseeing the accounts, and that is where reconciliation has been happening. That chunk shouldn't be happening. It's mainly the reconciliation of the accounts and just the oversight of the accounts. The day-to-day bookkeeping, when I'm moving funds from one account to, you know, I have a, an individual that runs all of payroll, that also does all of the ACA processing and, and healthcare and deductions. We have someone that runs payroll. We have someone internally that runs all of the accounts payable, which, as you all know, is a job unto itself when you.
Just explain what ACA is.
I'm sorry, uh, the Affordable Care Act. It's all health insurance-related documents and, and deductions. We have our accounts payable department, which is an individual who prepares all of the warrants, processes, all of the checks. The secretary's at the building level, put in for purchase orders. I'm approving all of the individual purchase orders and making sure that they're in line with the budgeted amounts for each of those lines that they're coming from. And then, as I'm making some changes, I have an individual who does HR. They work with all of the benefits, getting people onboarded, dealing with the retirees' benefits, which is also a large portion. And they also serve as quote-unquote "my support bookkeeper." So when I'm making transfers from one account to the next or from the cafeteria fund to the, you know, from the general fund to the cafeteria fund, they're entering that stuff. What we need is someone that's overseeing that the checks are signed properly, that the checks are going to individuals that are the ones connected to the invoices, and that what we're putting into our account keeping is what's actually happening on the bank's end.
To the checking of our work.
To the, to the, to the checking of our work. So, we get an auditor at the end of the year, and their job is to come back and identify whether or not we've made issues and report that to the state. There are checks and balance to the state. The treasurer position is the check and balance for the school committee governance to the district administration. So that's the piece. Yep. I said respectfully to all serving.
Any other questions? Well, we certainly will revisit this often, early and often.
Yeah, we wanted to come to the committee this evening with, just to, because we know this is a shift in practice, with the, with the concept, and then have the specifics for the next meeting. That's all right.
And we are, uh, I don't want to ask you to hurry, but I'm going to ask you to quickly.
I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Well, I can quickly go through everything. The salary, there have been nothing, there's not, on the reports that I have, again, we're not at the halfway point in the year. So, there's nothing that's out of the ordinary, that's on our, on our salary spend-down sheet. One of the questions that came up was, and this is an excellent question, brought to me by Dr. DeFalco, probably via school committee members. The balance that we have is still showing a positive. In fact, the balance this, this time, this month is now greater than the balance was last month. And one might ask, well, if we've paid people more and we've encumbered what we're supposed to be paying, why would the balance go up? There have been changes in positions. There have been people that have been out on leave, that have not been, that have not been paid if they're on leave, and that, that actual loss of the payment rolls into the balance and is actual an increase. Likewise, we've had some positions that turned over just recently, and there may have been some salary savings with the individuals that were hired. So that would change the balance on, on this, on the salary summary. That is the one with the yellow outline. If there's any questions, please.
So one of the questions I had when I sat with Jason was, and, and he and I were both trying to determine what is being encumbered and what isn't. So I know, last time you gave us the report, I think you said something about hourly salaries. You were not encumbering.
So all, all salaries that we are anticipating are encumbered in.
Hourly and, and, okay.
To the best of, to the best that we know. Typically, the hourly employees are encumbered at the highest, the highest rate that they could potentially cost.
But, for example, we have not encumbered all potential substitutes, because we don't know what they could be.
Correct.
We have not encumbered additional payroll for snow removal, not knowing if there's snow tomorrow night.
Correct.
So, the one, the, the ones that became a question, just when he and I were, were going through it, were, so technology, so this is just salary. Encumbered is, are all of the employees, there's a positive there, so what is that?
That, that's actually a perfect, that's a perfect example. We had a resignation, and that per, in between the last report and this report, that person's salary was unencumbered, because they no longer work for the district. That being said, that person has not been replaced yet. So we're currently looking to fill that position, and that's where that bump in savings in the technology area came in. Does that make sense? And also, Dr. DeFalco and I were looking at some of the reports. These are initial reports, as, as stated, we were coming in the first few months. I was getting, I'm getting a handle on the budget and the best way to present things to you. As, if we're moving forward and we feel that there are better reports to be generated and anything that provides you more detail, I'm going to look into some other possibilities of, of how to provide this information to the committee and potentially give examples and see what works best for people.
So, then one other question, just because it, not every, maybe, I won't, actually, I'll, so athletic coaches. You've encumbered $35,833. Is that one season? Is that, um, that's, that, to me, it looks like just fall, because it's spent to date at zero.
That's what's been put in.
We probably just pay them.
Yep, that was just put in. Our payroll, our payroll specialist can only encumber what they're made aware of, that that stipend is going to be approved. So certain stipends are not approved yet.
So, the, the stipends we've put into our budget to get to the $180,000, so, so then, like intertwining the, the salary spend-down and our line item spend-down and looking at athletics, just as an example, the stipends we have in our budget, line by line, for all seasons, are not being encumbered into salaries.
Until that person is, until that stipend is approved.
Right, until that stipend is approved and that person's put into the system to receive that stipend.
So the $117,000 you have on the line for athletic coaches, is that, is that part of this $180,000 budget?
Yes, the, remember, this $180,000, this $180,000 is ours.
So on this sheet where you have encumbered for $103,000, is 35 of that, the $103,000?
I'm sorry, I.
I know what you're, I know what you're asking, Erin. Erin, so if you look at the athletic coaches here and you see that we've encumbered $35,883. Yep, and then you look at the.
Or is it two separate numbers?
Yep. So there's like a $70,000 gap between what's encumbered in salaries and what's encumbered.
Which is definitely like, transportation from fall, it's, it's.
Right, so if you're looking at athletics coaches, the 117, the 117, 868, that's a portion of.
180.
That 180. But if you remember, there's approximately 70,000 more that is anticipated as an offset from u, from user fees in that athletics. So that athletics line, though it says 180,000, is closer to 2, is closer to 260. And from that, yes, that 117, 868 for coaches' salaries is part of that total.
So part of the encumbered on our next sheet of 103, the, and then, I know I'm,
Oh, I'm sorry.
I probably shouldn't be using athletics as the example, but.
Some of that would be, yep, some of it is what's also encumbered for salaries. Some of it might be encumbered for transportation for a specific season. There, there might be a couple of other.
Refs and such.
Right, we might, sometimes we put in open purchase orders for whatever services that are going to be provided. So that might be part of that encumbered 103,000.
So, is it fair to say that this whole line of encumbered is, is in, also embedded in this sheet? In other, if it falls under the cost center? Or is it just athletics?
There's only a few. So not all of the salary lines are in this cost center report. But if there is a, if there is a cost center report, like if there's a cost center here that has some salaries in it, and you're looking at that salary line, the encumbrance should be included in the total encumbrance for that. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, it does, because if you look at substitute teachers, you have encumbered 65,098. There's nothing in that line other than salary. So 65,098, if you look at the salary summary, under substitutes, it's 65,098. Well, and 20 cents, but.
Yeah, but if you look at the FY budget for substitutes, it's 198, 158.
Right.
And on the salary line, it's 201, 908.
But in that, in that line, that particular line, there are day-to-day subs that you cannot encumber, because we don't know what the, the usage is going to be. But what is encumbered are the permanent substitutes in the building.
Total budget.
Yes, and that total budget includes both the day-to-days and the permanent subs that are in each building. And the encumbrance that we have is for the, the permanent subs and any day-to-day sub usage that we've had thus far.
Yes, some of those small variances, this, this line in the budget, FY 19, that's locked. So whatever is, whatever is in there from when.
What we approve.
It's what we approved. But as new people come on, what's, some, the, the, one of the problems, it's not a problem, but one of the intricacies of Budget Sense and our payroll, it's all linked together. When we add an individual as a permanent sub and they're budgeted for the, a cer, a certain amount, it will change that total budget line. Even though we locked it at a certain amount, it's still seeing it as, this is what you budgeted to pay this person. If you add a new person and budget to pay for that person, it changes the budget.
Thank you.
The, I think, again, the cost center spend-down, I think we went through it simultaneously in the essence of time. If there are questions on any of these reports, please feel free to ask them now or feel free to email with specific, with specific questions. The classroom technology line, I know we mentioned before, that has to do with the fact that our Chromebooks and everything that we just purchased, the purchase order was for the duration and that's being split. The revenue report, which I tried to make a little more visible than the E and D. Things are moving as expected. The percent budgeted, as you can see where we are with our assessment collection, we're in a good place. Circuit, circuit breakers coming in. The grants, one of the interesting pieces you might notice on the back page, the grants all say 10%. When we apply for the grants through the state, they do an initial release of 10%. And that was the initial release that we got, so it's accurately depicted. The other thing to note is the revenue debt service, the last two lines, the debt service for Blackstone and the debt service for Millville, those are allocated separately on the revenue portion, but they're part of the total assessment budget.
Oh, gotcha.
On the top two lines. So the last two lines are for budget, for tracking purposes to separate them, and I may adjust that. But, right now, the, the total of what we've collected in capital and the regular assessment is the balance. So that's why the percent in the budget looks, looks equal.
So if you left it this way by the end of the year. So, if you left it this way, by the end of the year, the assess, two assessments would be over by those two amounts.
No, it'll be 100. That's included in the, in the actual budget amount. But, that's why there's nothing budgeted for it in the airlines. There's just a collection of it. Do you see? On the last two lines, there's just a collection. I'll, I'll fix that for the next time. So, I apologize. And their last very large report that you have was Personnel Report. Dr. DeFalco and I mentioned regularly bringing updates to what's going on with staffing in the district. As you can see, we broke down by Unit A. A, there's two people in B, but hopefully, there's, there would potentially be B. So, Unit A, C, and other employees. We've listed the retirements, the resignations, transfers, and any new positions added and appointments. This one first report is from the beginning of the year, so, it's relatively large. If you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. The next report you see of this should be probably just a few lines in each of the columns or hopefully none. Hopefully, hopefully none.
And if I could just add one little piece, there is no vote or anything needed on this. You just, it's just received and placed on file. It's just an informational only for the committee.
And the last piece of information in my report is the budget timeline for FY 20. I know that you've all looked at that with Dr. DeFalco. There were some changes made to make sure that we have the public hearing and the adoption of the budget by the March, by the March meeting to push it in line with getting it out to the towns and meeting with the towns appropriately. And as Dr. DeFalco mentioned, week of 11-5, budget worksheets have been distributed to all of the principals and the cost center supervisors, and we are on track for developing a budget in a timely fashion, to be approved in equally a timely fashion.
And to share with the public, we hope to have a review of a draft budget at our January 9 School Committee meeting. We have already scheduled January 16 joint meeting with the two towns and the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committees, and so, we hope to have a discussion about that draft budget with them at that meeting on the 16th. And on, conduct our budget workshops during the month of February, early March, and on March 13th, hold our public hearing and adopt the FY 20 budget. Thank you for developing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for business end of things?
I got a question about the budget timeline, which I just made it back in time for. So, if, between 11-5 and 11:30, we're going to have the school committee and, or principals, cost center supervisors develop line item budget needs. That's the next line, sorry. It's a long meeting. The school committee and school leadership identify district budget priorities. Are we going to be looking at that at our next meeting? Is it worth staying on target?
No.
Okay. That was all I had.
Do we have a facility report?
There's no updates.
School Committee Forum. I would like to announce that Millville is in the process of having a search for a new town administrator, and they are looking for people to be on the search committee. They have not identified the school committee as one of the committees within the town to have a representative on that search committee, but they do have positions for community members. So, if anybody from Millville is interested in being on that search committee, you need to send a letter of interest to the town administrator email, and they will be selecting members to serve on that search committee. And certainly, we will be in communication with them that when they do have candidates, at least having an opportunity to meet with those people and be part of that discussion as we did when we brought in our superintendent candidates because the dialogue between the two become very important. So, we'll continue that. I have, we have been asked to go to the Finance Committee meeting tomorrow night in Millville, and I will be doing that and hopefully talking about... Letters for the Town Administrator Selection Committee due tomorrow. Yes, oh, yes, they are due tomorrow, by the way. Thank you. Want to be on it. They are due tomorrow. And so, tomorrow evening, I will be there and talking about the whole MSBA project and what that means for, for Millville. We have a, our next meeting, our workshop on the 28th, and that, we have moved that to 5:30 PM at Millville because that is the night of the Millville Special Town Meeting. And so, starting at 6:00 and being here would have been difficult for Millville residents to do that. And that is our workshop with Wendy Greenstein, who's going to talk to us about superintendent evaluation. She will use the actual goals that we approved tonight to outline how we evaluate our superintendents. So, we need to get those to her. I look forward to the community Thanksgiving dinner. I hope other people are attending as well and meeting families and doing that there. Bethany, have anything?
I just want to thank the administration, the staff, faculty, for the work that they do with our students, and I hope everyone has a great holiday, those who celebrate Thanksgiving. And that's all.
I just, I was fortunate enough to have Election Day off. As a teacher in Rhode Island, they use our schools for voting, so I get Election Day off. And so, for the second year, I asked principals as well as Dr. DeFalco if I could visit some classrooms. So, Dr. DeFalco and I did the district tour, got over to each school. I was able to see a lot of good learning opportunities in all of the classrooms. And I just wanted to thank those teachers. I started to take names so I could send them a little note, and then, we just visited so many, I stopped taking track. So, I just wanted to give a big shout out to all of the teachers who allowed me to go visit and to Dr. DeFalco and Bridget for setting that up so quickly, and principals for helping with that as well. So, I had a great day. I did learn what question two was because I had apparently misread it or something, but the middle school was, the students were nice enough to post some signs that gave me a reminder of what that was all about because I was overburdened with the question-one signs for this whole process. So, thank you to the middle school and the history teachers for that little bit of civics while I was here.
Just wanted to say thank you to the teachers last night. I was a parent teacher last night at Millville and the high school. It was nice, you know, just talking to teachers. Everyone I spoke to had really positive attitudes, so it was just nice to talk to them face-to-face and be able to thank them. And then, the ice hockey for the boys, tryouts start Monday after Thanksgiving, and it sounds like we have almost 10 from the district that are trying out. So, we only had three last year, so it's nice to see that the numbers are there. And they were able to do JV because of those numbers. It's a lot of age-migrators, so.
Erin?
I just want to congratulate the band again. Going through the whole season, it's a pretty emotional climb up until last weekend, but, and I definitely want to thank Dr. DeFalco for making the trip. I heard from many kids how excited they were that you were there, and, and I think that just, they felt that support. So, thank you for making that trip. It was a fast and furious day for you just as well and your whole family. That was very, very nice of you. Did the boys like it?
They loved it. They absolutely loved it, yeah.
So, that was an amazing day. They were first place in my book, but, and of course, to our football team and our soccer, the boys' soccer team, they won their first game here and moved on, just like football did. So, it was a very exciting fall for our, our schools, teaching and learning-wise and extracurricular activity. I mean, there was definitely a lot of excitement, and you could, you could feel it coming home with the kids. I was going to mention the Thanksgiving dinner, too. So, hope to see a lot of familiar faces and new faces there and celebrating that night together. And I wanted to mention one thing about, so, our workshop has moved to Millville because there's a Millville Town Meeting, correct?
Correct.
That is immediately following that. So, Wednesday night, the 28th, there will be a Millville Town Meeting for anyone that feels like coming out and give us, giving the town a quorum. It can't be just us four.
They need to balance their budget, so I think there'll be a quorum.
It is a big meeting, so, I mean, I don't, I don't know. And, yeah, good luck to all the kids trying out for the new sport, the new sports season after Thanksgiving. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Our District Wellness Committee had its first of four meetings. I want to say, what, was it Wednesday, last Wednesday, Thursday? Sometime last week. What we will be working on is rewriting our district's health and wellness policy to match state law and qualify as a, both, what were the two qualifiers? It was strong and, it's...
Caught me.
Yeah. It's leaving my head now. I had it 10 seconds ago.
Functional.
Functional.
The report, the, the, the...
That is not important.
The wellness, the wellness policy needs to be written strong, it needs to be written and implemented and reviewed properly and enforceable.
So, that will be what we're working on then, and we will have a new student representative to that committee, Noah Laren.
Oh, that's great.
Karen?
I think everything's been covered by the time we go all the way around. You know, we had the feast, and we have the conferences, and all the schools have book fairs going on this week. So, if parents want to support teacher libraries or their kids' libraries, reading is a great thing. And, yeah, have a happy holidays.
Ditto. I will remind everyone that our next regular scheduled meeting is December 12th. This time, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to the regular meeting to adjourn executive session, so. Roll call. Yes.
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 I know, I always say my name. Thank you very much for your patience.